Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Township Board Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge of the flag. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, it's my pleasure to honor one of our citizens. I have a certificate of appreciation for Sharon Ta. Sharon, would you hand them please?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your service. So I'm going to read this for everyone. In appreciation of your dedicated service as a member of the Springsbury Township Historic Preservation Committee and Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, on behalf of all its citizens, the Board of Supervisors wishes to express sincere gratitude for your years of dedication and faithful public service on the sixteenth day of November, 2022, and signed by all the Board Supervisors.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I can't believe. I'm going to challenge him. Try and stay.
So we did have an executive session since our last meeting for the purpose of discussing bargaining unit agreements. And now I'd like to open up the floor for communication from citizens. So if there's anyone either in person or on Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please click the raise hand button to be recognized. Anyone? Anyone in the audience? All right, we'll move on to engineering reports. Environmental engineering, Diana.
Good evening. She's submitted reports, isn't it? It's all going to be questions to be glad to answer.
That was quick and easy. Thank you. All right, John.
I don't have any updates. Three of the plans that were discussed in my end of the quarter will be on the agenda tonight.
Question for John. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion? Your motion?
A motion to approve this on agenda is eight realist.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Subdivision and land development. Hey, John, I would just like to have that opportunity.
The first plan on the agenda is a I'm sorry.
No, I was just. So the first one is, I got you all flustered.
You did.
All right, so let me catch up here.
Twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 three. It's a subdivision Herbert J. Robin Conrad, nineteen twenty-five and nineteen thirty-five Alcott.
Good evening to the Board Supervisors. Let's give you a little brief synopsis. This is a two lot subdivision, if you will, or a lot consolidation of nineteen twenty-five and nineteen thirty-five Alcott Road. We're joining those two lots together to make one building lot. And we have three waivers here tonight as well as two conditions of approval. From what I understand, we have the Congress here tonight representing their plan. So if they would like to say something, or the Congress here. Good evening. So this is a pretty simple subdivision, block consolidation plan that you get from that standpoint. This is pretty simplistic, if you will. Joining the two lots into one building lot. So I don't have anything else to add unless the Congress has something in addition to say.
I have one brief comment on the plan when through the planning commission report. This is, even though it's a minor subdivision, it was part of the Tripleton Brining Plan. And we're probably looking at that, like we wave sidewalks in the minor subdivision thing, you know, to do all that. But these sidewalks are fine. They're going in. There are guarantees. They're just going to eliminate one of the two driveways they have shown. These were the estate lot that recall. You come out of Tripleton Springs, turn right, there's five or six lot. And one of the lots is pretty steep. I think a couple of different people evaluated the lots. And said, without combining the two parcels, we really can't dissolve it properly. So you're not giving up sidewalk to even now we're getting a minor subdivision.
Thanks, John. Appreciate that clarification. Didn't have it on the project narrative that they wasn't installing sidewalk.
So we're just looking at scale plan, minor subdivision plan, and then was it keeping the existing monuments? So there's nothing new to add there?
Correct.
And then just normal conditions?
That would be correct as well.
Mr. Chairman, with reference to subdivision plan S D twenty twenty-two dash oh 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 three, preliminary final subdivision plan Herbert J. and Robert L. Conrad move to approve the plan subject to three modification waivers as listed.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, with reference to subdivision plan S D twenty twenty-two dash oh 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 three, preliminary final subdivision plan for Herbert J. and Robin L. Conrad move to recommend approval of the plan as presented with all the conditions of approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. All right, next we'll move on to land development twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 one JLS Automation LLC Building Expansion Number Two, twenty innovation drive.
This particular land development plan is a, as it stated, a second phase of what JLS Automation is proposing. They currently are constructing their their initial expansion, if you will, to that particular property. And now they are looking to add an additional twenty-five thousand nine hundred ten square feet building expansion before loading drop dock to the driving door along the west side of the existing hundred thousand square foot building. We do have some waiver requests, modification waiver requests are listed here as four. And then we do have some conditions of approval. One bring one of those conditions of approval to your attention. The township manager may have something to add to that as well. And that's in respect to the, there was in here one second. That would be comment number three of conditions of approval regarding the location dimensions and purpose of all easements. And that's in regard to moving the sewer lines from where they originally were positioned to another spot on the site. And what that's going to do is going to make the applicants potentially do some reconfiguring, if you will, of those sewer lines. And that is still in negotiation. Our Director of Public Works and Director of Wastewater Treatment. So we don't have that refined, if you will, tonight. We're still working on solution to that. And we do have representation for JLS, their consultants, Mr. Adam Anderson is here tonight. I think to speak a little bit more detail, and I think the supervisors may want to hear that prior to making any motion on this particular plan. But I think that's pertinent. So you know what's transpiring at this point or what's in the works, if you will, in trying to find solution to meeting that requirement there in township. Well.
If the board approves the plan, we need to reword number the conditions of approval, number three, to state more than just review the plan. We have agreed to the solution. And what they're doing is they have to realign our public sewer line to fit this building. And in doing so, we have to make sure we don't lose capacity in that line. And to do, and that's what Danny Cravill is reviewing now. So we just have to come up with the solution where we don't lose capacity in that sewer line for future growth because this line is basically holding or transporting all of York, most of Yorkland sewage down through and down into our main intercept. So we can talk more about that later.
Anyone want to address that?
Yeah. All right, well, we didn't have Adam Anderson's site design concept. But yeah, I did speak with Mr. Cravill this afternoon, and we talked about the his concern with the, so the issue is the interceptor has a straight shot through our project site at the moment. What we're doing is rerouting around different areas. So what we're increasing the length, which decreased the slope, thus bringing down capacity of the line. So talking to Mr. Cravill, he gave me point seven five percent slope is the minimum that the township will accept. And obviously, we don't want to take or diminish the capacity along. So we just need to work to that slope. And I don't, I don't see an issue that we couldn't address that.
So we could say conditioned on meeting the
Maintaining capacity. I also discussed with the manager and Danny, as long as we can maintain our capacity and don't reduce it, we will, it would be acceptable. Agreed. And just so you know, initially, we were thinking, well, the line, what percentage of the line has been used? They're transitioned. You've got a hundred and fifty apartments. The manager said he got all of Yorkland. He got new construction out there. We really don't have a good handle on the flow there. So as long as we can keep what we have, then we know we're going to be okay.
So it's more of a theoretical number?
Yes.
It's the maximum, maximum capacity of the line?
Correct.
So if they maintain maximum capacity of the line?
We don't want to lose that.
So Mr. Cravill threw out, threw out three point five.
Keep down per day. And with the, we would lose about a third of our capacity if we flattened out that line section. So rather than do that, we're going to do an alternate.
And we're confident that'll survive. Whatever planning gap will thrive and will be able to provide that capacity for.
Correct. So the design is showing to be modified. There's a way to do it.
There is a way to do it?
There is a way.
Because it's not, I mean, you got point A, you got point B.
Right.
Increase. So we're not going to increase the length.
So what we did is point A, point B, we didn't see the and then water back. So we just need to straight. Need to take out their flat spot in the line and connect the whole longitudinal thing would now need to be a constant twelve.
Those turns don't diminish past.
It's the flatness of the swell of the flat.
It's my time. You okay with sheeting the water?
Yes, yes. They don't, there's a request for eliminating the curvy in that water sort of sheeted into a basin now. I thought, you know, maybe we could avoid that, but it worked that way for some time and it's, it's, you need to work.
Anything else that you want us to focus on? Either John or Randall?
No, I don't really have anything else that would be a holdup, if you will, to heavily approving these plans.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to L D twenty twenty-two dash oh 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 one Land Expansion Number Two, JLS Automation. I move to approve the plan subject to four waivers as presented.
Really not approving the plan, it's proving the waivers.
Approving the waivers. So recommend approval of the requested four modifications waivers as listed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, with reference to land development.
Let Don catch up. You good, Don?
I think so. I just got confused with the two different things, but let Charles continue.
Okay.
With reference to land development plan L D twenty twenty-two dash oh 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 one preliminary final land development plan for building expansion number two, JLS Automation L R C. I move to recommend approval of the plan subject to conditions one, two, and four above, and modify condition three so as that the township can ensure the maintenance of sewer capacity in sewer line on the infected.
Maximum sewer.
Maximum sewer capacity. Max.
Yes. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, is that maximum design? Is that what we're talking about?
That's what the pipe can carry.
Yeah.
In its current condition, like the way it flowed in there, they're going to match that current condition.
The past via that. Current?
Maximum.
Theoretical maximum of that.
So line flowing through will flow with the same million gallons per day when they get done retrofitting this one. As we know what that means. We do, we could do it with a chart or calculation. I have actually calculated.
Engineers figure that out.
I will. God bless. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Look, gentlemen. All right, next we have land development twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 five York County Prison Addition slash Renovation for Central Booking Relocation, thirty-four oh four Concord Road.
This is a land development plan proposed by the county for this addition to the prison. Moving the central booking facility from, I think it's in the city of York to the county prison here in Springsbury Township. It's a fairly minor subdivision, our land development in that respect there. On this large campus, they're doing something rather small, if you will, to what's currently there. This has also been through the planning commission. We're bringing it here. We have four modification waivers. And we basically have one condition of approval. And I may say that this maybe even isn't a condition of approval. I use this opportunity to kind of explain what the traffic engineer had indicated of driveway analysis and wanted to bring to the board attention that the one throat length for one of the driveways is only forty-five feet. However, it has two separate exits because it's only an exit, only it's not an ingress and egress. So in essence, you have ninety feet of throat length, if you will. But I wanted to at least bring that to your attention just to show that that forty-five is not quote unquote being our organs, but you look at it from the way the engineer looked at it, and I ultimately agree that in combined, combined the two, you get ninety feet. So I just wanted to let you know as a board that there's a little bit of a difference here.
We just leave that as a modification added.
I don't, I don't.
I mean, we're not changing anything.
No, no, the, all the driveways remain the same. Since the last prison development.
So do we need to do?
We have the broke geometry and they probably goes for that test, but I don't think so.
So we can just leave that alone?
It's all, yes. I don't think they need a modification to think they analyzed the distribution of the driveway. I think the critical thing, which clients aren't sure will tell you that the prison's population, I think I had stated in a few other engineering reports, it's significantly down because of the loss of the, this is what we all heard as staff, because of the ICE contract. Work released is pretty much vacant. I'm looking for ways to repurpose that building because the man prisoners, maybe that's a good thing, maybe the pathway, I don't know. The ban for prison population is way down. I'm not too sure what I'm doing here. The staff's doing a wonderful job. John Flanders, T S Anderson, representing county. If there are any questions to, just to put it in context, this is about a twelve thousand square foot private, seven thousand of it's inside the prison. Five is a five thousand square foot, oh, less than five thousand square foot addition on the outside. In a, what I would think is about two hundred thousand square foot building without anybody noticing. But we did work closely with your staff and engineer to address all their comments, all questions, your ordinance requirements, had a traffic engineer look at the driveways. They're all minimum use drivers. I agree. It's in all terms, it was very minor land development on already developed property.
John, only because it's kind of sticking out here. Out of curiosity, these wall pack lightings, are they just going to be LED?
I say with ninety-five percent confidence, they'll do, I think everybody, everything outside now is all and they're just for right at the new entrances of into the addition. So it would be very.
Just curious, really.
So I think this is the architect's point. Find that.
So maybe. Yeah, it's not. My ass.
So this facility is completely replacing the facility in the courthouse downtown?
That's correct. The the operations are currently conducted in our judicial center right now, which never was designed for it. So this operation is designed specifically for the function, which is they bring people in, hold them, adjudicate them, book them. And either they go into the prison or they get released, whatever the judge decides. Actually, a very functional operation through the police force. As I said to the planning commission, in case now, if they take a, a charged person into central booking downtown and the person decides they're sick, the officer has to take them down to the hospital to the emergency room and has to stay with them. Under this operation, they'll take them to the facility and then walk to central booking. If they decide they're sick, the prison has healthcare facilities internally. They'll, they'll take care of it. Your officer can go back out on the road. So most of the police chiefs I've talked to have been supportive of the function.
I have smiles from the back corner.
That's a function right now, eight hours. Needs more prisoners now. I wrote that down already.
Well, Bartlett's Vineyard ships all of them back down here. We can get the administration to pay for it. And we can put them back into a facility that's vacant. We'd be okay with that, right?
But as was noted, it is, the prison is very far reduced in population, which is why we're looking, what can we do with some of that empty space? There's where the corner, the corner, the door went into, unused ice eating space. This will take care of some of the former women's work release area. There's a couple of studies going on for internal operations. How can we best use the space? For county phone.
So what, what provisions have been made for security in this facility?
The security will match the security of the prison. We just went over the cameras and the door controls last Friday. It'll have the same security level. The walls are the contained. So the doors are all controlled by central pull of the prison. There are sheriff's deputies in there twenty-four seven. And they have the prison structural officers as backup. And again, just to point out, I had to learn this, these people are not guilty. May not be guilty.
They may not be the best citizens in the county either.
I can't argue with that. Or they wouldn't be there.
We can, we can ask the, the police chief how many people they arrest at churches and then take to central booking.
But even the, when the, when these people are brought in, in a police vehicle, they went to the garage, which is a salary. So one door ahead of it can't open. So it's, a lot of that security has been taken into account. That's a very good question. Gordon had a lot of involvement.
Any other questions?
So we are not getting this condition now?
No.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to L D twenty twenty-two dash oh 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 five preliminary final land development plan for York County Prison Edition Renovation for Central Booking Relocation, I move to recommend the approval of the four requested modifications.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, with reference to land development plan L D twenty twenty-two dash oh 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 five preliminary final land development plan for York County Prison Prison Addition Renovation for Central Booking and Relocation. I move to recommend approval of the plan subject to no conditions.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciation of the staff and everyone for working us through very small project in your complex regulations. It was an interesting path to work through that. Thank you.
Any communication from supervisors? You guys are all talked up?
No, I haven't either. So it's my pleasure to represent Springsbury Township tomorrow at the P S S regional meeting whereby the township population of ten thousand persons or greater will have their annual meeting in anticipation of activities at the upcoming in conference. So I'll be representing us tomorrow. Be happy to provide you with feedback. If any of you has any burning issues, feel free to let me know here this evening or just send me a text.
Don't wait up.
Cat? Need to get the bed after last.
Social support, Charlie?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Mark Manager's report.
I do have one thing to add to my written report. We received two flags from Representative Staler in this letter. I'll read the letter to the board. Dear Board Supervisors, it has been an honor representing you in Harrisburg and working with you over the years. As a token of my appreciation for all the hard work you do for your municipality and its citizens, I'm enclosing a P A in the U S flag for the township. Thank you again for being a partner and working as a team to better the lives of the citizens of the ninety-fourth district and York County sincerely stand. Thank you again for being a partner and working as a team to better the lives of the citizens of the 94th district and York County sincerely stand, say.
Nice. We're going to put those in our new boardroom?
We will put them to good use, yes. That is all that I have.
Any questions for the legislature? Like any change in the date again? Okay, ordinances and resolutions, resolution number 2022-44, amending designated depositors. Anything we need to know?
We, Mr. Chairman, we have exceeded our maximum at deposits, account balances at Traditions Bank. So we want to open up a. Plague in account, another plague in account to deposit money into that account, so we're within our maximum at York Traditions.
I'll move to approve resolution 2022-44.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Charlie, is this something I should have stayed? I don't think so either.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any old business items that anyone would like to address? So I'm going to bring something up, I could have mentioned it under supervisors' comments, but I think this is a good place. Apparently, one of the owners, or at least an interested party in the properties between. Whiteford Road and, uh, and the avenues over there, um, where we've been talking about sidewalks, traffic calming and everything else. Has actually reached out to me for a discussion, which I will have sometime early next week. He's not very happy with us requiring them to put sidewalks in. Not sure he understands the full implication of the area and the fact that. Already taking a look at how we can increase sidewalks in that whole development. So I will have that discussion and hear him out and I will report back. We are still taking a look at, um. What it would need sidewalks in there and plans for how. We could either fund that or the residents would fund that or whatever.
I think that's a, a bigger discussion, bigger discussion that we need to have as a board and as staff. Do we want to come up, I think we ought to come up with a overall plan, look at the township as a whole. And where, where do we see the need for sidewalks and this is one of those needs? They come up with an overall, here's the gaps and try to prioritize. Where we want to put sidewalks.
Sir, do you have a? Question for the board? Yes. So I'm picking one next up. Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, presentation. Introducing Chantel and Glow Fiber.
Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Kurt Cosco from Chantel Communications.
Good evening to the board, sorry to put you on the spot. So, uh, good evening, my name's Kurt Cosco, I represent Chantel Glow Fiber. I live near State College, so I have a nice drive down, we've got five inches of snow up there, so this is a pleasant surprise to come down here. Uh, I'm here this evening to do a short presentation for the board on Chantel. And their Glow Fiber, fiber to the home products, uh, we've been doing a lot of, of work in Lancaster and York counties. As well as a few other areas, Carlisle, um, getting cable franchise agreements to, uh, provide services. Fiber to the home, there's specific, so here tonight to kind of gauge the interest, uh, Spring, it's very township. Uh, to see if there would be interest, any interest in us being into provide services here as well. We would have to talk about a branch, a cable franchise negotiation if we could get to that point. But I'm kind of here this evening just to kind of let you know who we are. What we would come on, what we can offer. So I only have about five slides, I know, let's keep me short, uh, so if, uh, if we can go through, if there's any questions, just stop me at the beginning. So. So Chantel has been around a long time, without a start on, we've been around about 120 years, started down in Virginia. Telephone, traditional telephone company. And we focus on three important things, advanced networks, excellent customer support, local community investment partnership. I work with the government and insurance teams, so I stay in contact with a lot of local municipalities. We're relatively small company, 816 employees, 240 million in net revenues. And we're profitable, we're not here this, this evening looking for money, uh, to, to build a network, uh, we're totally funded. Um, this would be more private investment companies, we're not, it's not really a grant situation. So we're private equity, we have funds to go build it, this would be a brand new network we're talking about. Uh, currently, we have about 112,000 homes with our fibers, low fiber product, which is fiber to the home. And we focus a lot in rural communities, mid-sized communities, they're not really interested in going into the Philadelphia, the Pittsburgh markets. We like these type of requirements here, where they're relatively small to midsize. We want to provide the same services though that you could get in a large city to rural or midsize communities. So this is kind of our network, uh, we bought, this is when I started, this is 7,000 miles, so 7,900 miles of fiber. And we started along the 81 corridor down to Virginia and we've expanded up into Pennsylvania. Chantel was the Sprint cell phone provider here for a number of years, and when T-Mobile bought Sprint. Uh, Chantel had to sell their interests, but we had a fiber network here with a number of towers, which is how we've kind of gotten started up in this area. So if you see in this slide, and it's behind you, uh, you can see there's this huge fiber network up around. Shippensburg, Carlisle, Lancaster County, York County. We also have been, uh, expanding into Maryland. We recently did a franchise agreement with the city of Salisbury, Wentworth County. We have a franchise there with the city of Frederick, expanding in County. So we're going in different directions, we're interested in expanding more in this area. So we have a number of cable franchise agreements that we've signed recently in York. And I apologize if I leave anyone out, but we've signed agreements with York Township. Windsor Borough, Windsor Township. Spring. Spring, sorry. Lion. Wow, Dallas Town, yo. And last week, we signed both Manchester and West Manchester to cable franchises, so we were on the 8th and 10th last.
So, yes, better faster, cheaper?
Faster, definitely, um, cheaper, I think what we're going to bring is competition to the existing providers. And I think, uh, that always has a positive impact for residents as far as pricing and customer service. So, yes. So that's kind of our network. Yeah, we got an agreement, right? So next slide. So what is it, uh, what we're talking here, it's 100% fiber network, all the way from our pop building to the customer's home. We offer triple play, internet video, phone, uh, video, the reason we get cable franchise agreement, video service, ultra high speed bandwidth. Our fiber networks are a lot more reliable than cable or V S L. Symmetrical bands, band speeds, this is really important, um, traditional cable systems offer. 300 speed, our downstream speed, or maybe one gig speed right now, but the upstream speed is much slower. Usually 10 or 20, with symmetrical speeds, uh, when we sell our speeds, if you take a 300 big package, you'll get 300 both ways. You take one gig, it's one gig both ways. Why is that important in today's market, uh, there's many people that are working from home right now or telemedicine from home. Studies from home, especially with COVID, this became really important, COVID. With the number of people that were trying to, uh, upload things up into the, you know, the cloud. So, uh, it's a great selling point for us, we also have a passive optical architecture. Which means we really don't have any actors out between our company and customers' health. So in a traditional cable system, they have amplifiers that affect by power. So a lot of noise factors with fiber, there's no active out in the system. So in that respect, it's. The benefits, uh, we're talking significant capital investment in the market, competitive offerings, uh, we would be coming in and competing with the existing, existing provider. On that would replace, uh, the provider in market, this would be an addition to them. Positive economic development impact, uh, we do, we have, not only have residential products, we have business products as well. So we do a lot of enterprise fiber for medical facilities, point to point, uh, banking facilities. And telecommunication, we talked about, it's very important that the symmetry for speeds. We're also a participate member in the affordable connectivity program, that's a federal program that offers $30 discount for all buying customers. And most of the larger cable companies are offering that now to be returned to buy. So municipal engagement, so, um, I believe worked with the Cohen group before and they represented a number of municipalities. And, um, they, they 100% held the municipalities' interest at heart. Done a lot of negotiations with them through the years and they, they most definitely represent municipalities very well. What we've done is, in order to kind of work through the cable franchise agreement. We've been, um, paying for the fee that Cohen would charge to the township or, or the boroughs. And the reason we do that is because it just helps expedite the process, coming in as someone who's an overbuilder into a market. There are certain things that are different than a traditional cable company would do. So there's a difference, but differences in the language, a lot of the language is very similar, there's some things that Cohen, the Cohen group is very good at. So, uh, you, you have the option to use the program, you know, if you would choose, we would pay that fee for you. So that would be entirely up to the township. And I, I know they've. Pretty much all of the other municipalities in York have.
That's who we use for our Comcast agreement.
Uh, timeline, so here this evening, start municipal engagement. So it takes 60 to 90 days, um, to do franchise agreements, this time of year, I mean, it'll take longer with the holidays. But that's where we like to start, just to gauge the interest, to see who would like to forward a franchise negotiation. Then we start with utility engagements, engineering, construction. Once the franchise, uh, agreement is, if we get to that point where there's a signed agreement. Construction usually starts between 12 and 18 months after that signed document. Those local jobs will be coming to the market with this, um, marketing, sales, operations positions. Community engagement, that's kind of why, and then we want to stay involved in the community. Like, so we're building a fairly large size footprint in York County as well as in Mr. County. And so this would be another benefit for the, for the area. These are just some of our pricing right now, obviously 12 to 18 months, it's a change, um, a couple of points on this. We don't have any hidden fees, we don't offer contracts, so. If you want to take our service, you can cancel anytime you want to, we're not looking for those signed contract. We do have discounts, you can take one and one product line. And this is just an example of some of the current products and prices that we have right now. And that's it, so. Is this, um, in ground on, uh, on current poles, what, how do you, it's a good question. So we would follow the existing, so, so if these utilities are aerial, we would go aerial, if the existing utilities are underground, we'll go on.
So how, how do you get into the house? Like, you connect Comcast cable and we use the same cable or?
No, we use a fiber optic cable that will go all the way into the house, it would be a brand new drop line that we would install. From the, uh, pretty much like the purvis is now with the Comcast system.
So I would assume this would not be offered in every areas from it's very, how do you identify where you're going?
So part of what we, uh, showed on the one slide was an engineering study, so we would basically get in an engineer design. And we usually build the network into pockets of about 200 homes. And then as we construct these, we activate them, we don't wait until the entire township is done, we can actually go and start with 200 activated and keep. So the, the more the area we can build, the better it is for us, because as a competitive overbuilder. You know right away, you're only going to get a percentage of the customers that are going to go and switch, so the larger the footprint we have, the better it is for us.
Are you actively constructing anything in your county now?
We have started in lengths, or York Township. They were the very first ones assigned, it's where, so we've been in there working, I know at least. And then we'll be planning to just keep moving, this, following kind of the path of the signed franchises. So we'll just keep moving through that.
So I've noticed over the years that another competitor that offers a fiber optic product has not entered into your account, or at least in Springs. Have you done any preliminary engineering work to make sure that this really would be feasible to bring fiber to this township?
Well, you're referring to FiOS, oh, um, yeah, FiOS is a very good product. They just haven't been expanding, so, uh, they built kind of initial network out. And the Cohen group represented the municipalities that, um, cable franchise agreements, they went through that. But we're, I guess, similar to the design that we offer. Um, and we currently basically have this product available to 150,000 homes right now. So we kind of need gauge the success of that, so. We're willing to commit and maybe significantly in capital investment, knowing that what we're going to offer better be. We better be able to compete with Comcast, or the, or whoever the provider is.
So I know flying under their radar, you aren't going to get the hit ads, we've, we're not flying under the radar anymore.
Okay, so, is there a good company, no, I'm not here to say anything. Any of our competition, I think what's important is that when we want to compete with, um, some of the big, uh, cable operators, they better be good. And so we are.
Your installation team, are those your employees or do you sub that out to some?
It's a mix, um, probably in the initial wave, there'll be a lot of contractors because of the volume. But over time, we will probably do a lot of that with. But over time, we will probably do a lot of that, it would be a mixture. Our contractors are all trained. We had a call this morning with, this afternoon with Wyomkumford County, Maryland. Similar questions came up, how do you certify contractors? So we have a program that we put them through to make sure that they're doing, understand the quality and the work that we want. We have, through the construction process, we have a group that we send out flyers to the customers of thirty days, sixty days. And then we'll door tag the neighborhoods beforehand with our number. So that we reduce the number of calls that are coming into the township or the borough, which we know is important. We want to deal with all of the plate issues that we can. So there's a lot of things we have in place to kind of ensure that what we're doing is fall. As well as informing everyone, maybe what we're doing. And we work very closely with the engineering and permitting with the township, we want to form a good partnership. Well, I mentioned earlier today is with those groups, they are. And they kind of want to introduce everybody, understand that we work very closely with the township. It's all through a permitting process where we go, township has a lot of control.
That pricing includes bringing to, to you not renting?
Our equipment is a little bit different, we, we bring the. We have an interface that the fiber actually plugs into. And then you can either rent a modem from us as well as some extenders, or you can use your own equipment. If you want a phone service on, if you take our phone service, your phone plugs right into that unit, it's not a separate unit. So the equipment is a little bit different. The entertainment packages. There's four different levels of TV service, and I can provide some detail on that, the channels that are available. You start at forty-five dollars with the locals, go up to five, so I can get you what the type of packages include off the wide box. It's courtesy. Leave some cards, if anyone has any questions.
Just a curiosity question there, Kurt, I see on your map that the fiber optic line. Comes through York, does it go through the township at this point? This line is.
I have a big loop. I don't know, I don't, I can find out.
I think you installed a private line for the county. I think they're, they installed a private fiber line for the county, they came from the city. And then goes to their new building or a pleasant valley. That was a number of years ago.
I know the county doesn't have some of the bars, we have a number of locations that we provide service to. But it's not cable, it's not video service, it's strictly internet or phone.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. And Mark, I'll be in touch. Thank you, thank you all.
Next, we have authorization to advertise the twenty twenty-three proposed budget. Any further discussion on? That or the impact of the Yalfer budget? And I assume that we take the two of those separately. It's not listed that way.
I'll just kick things off by commenting that. I really look forward to there being a new governance structure put in place in twenty twenty. Number one. Number two. I'm okay at this point with. Trusting that the yet-to-be-named personnel committee for Galford will do the right thing when it comes to the pen. Having said that, I will support. Approving the Galford budget as amended.
Since it doesn't say which budget on here, I'll assume.
Yeah, these are completely different things, aren't they? Advertising our budget and.
Approving theirs and authorizing theirs, authorizing advertising.
Because we could still approve it in assembly? Are you looking for approval tonight, chief?
I, because it's got to go back to the commission.
I think that's the impression the commission was left with, thanks.
Spring Garden and Chester have already affected it.
Well, Manchester has had improvements as far as advertising along with their. Spring Garden is on. So what's the process here for this?
Yeah, don't, don't we have a, have a requirement to have it on our agenda before we can act on?
Yes, I'm going to answer that question is yes.
And it isn't explicitly advertised?
That is the sunroof.
Yeah. Do we have to make, advertise it as presented?
What, which one are we talking?
Oh, well, so our budget. No, but.
Yeah, but we went through this last year and it doesn't matter what items we have.
I should have listened to the audio from last year.
Well, you need to advertise your budget.
Which includes our portion of Yalfer's budget.
Right.
So.
But that does not imply that we're approving Yalfer's budget, at least that's what we decided last year.
Yes, you're right, you're right. Okay, so what we're discussing right now is authorization to advertise. Springfield Township twenty twenty-three proposed budget. Is that a second move?
Don, Don Moon, George Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? January third. Reorg meeting, six o'clock? Done.
Sure.
Dates and times for twenty twenty-three regular meetings. The Board of Supervisors. Standard meetings plus the exceptions listed. And we do not hit fully Thursday.
Correct.
That is the first Thursday of April.
We're good with all those? Right here. Okay, dates and times for budget work sessions.
October ninth, sixteen, eighteen, and November fifteen. Six P M. In October, six thirty P M, in November.
So I'm, I'm fine with these dates. I think it might be worth it at some point, maybe not tonight, for us to discuss this board's involvement in the budget process. I, I, I think, I think what we do is fine, and I think everything the manager does is great with respect to the budget. And maybe there's not a problem, so I should keep my mouth shut, but that, you know, there. There were a number of processes in the past where the board had more involvement in. At least discussing things in, in the budget, not so much approving things, but just getting a better understanding of. What went into things. So, and again, I don't think it's something that we have to do now, but. It, because this year, we, we scheduled, we had three scheduled budget sessions, what we did, we canceled two of them. And basically. Just agreed with, with the manager, which I fully agree with agreeing with the manager.
So then what are you trying to say?
I'm, I'm trying to not say, back in my day, what we used to do. That's what I'm trying not to say.
Well, I would have to say in the recent past, we had to be more involved.
Exactly.
And, and I think we just need to talk about whether there's any benefits to that, that we should look at and think about or not. I mean, I, I know that. I, I, I appreciated having some budget interaction with department heads in the past. Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm not certain.
So pick one of these nights and have each of the department heads come in and pitch their budget to the board, is that what you're looking for?
Budget here.
Yeah, that was, that was the kind of thing that we, kind of interactions that we had in the past, yes.
Okay, so I'll go back to my original question, the three dates in October and the date in November, okay? To have those meetings however we decide that they should happen.
Perfect for me.
All right. Anything else? Evening, Jordan, thank you everyone.